GTV, we're ready?
There you are. All right, welcome everyone to the Goffstown School Board meeting. I call this meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Everybody can stand and rise to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to take a moment of silence. Today is September 11th. I would like to take a moment of silence, please. Thank you so much. You can all have a seat.
I can't see you.
I will try to speak louder, Fred. All right, we're going to start with correspondence. Brian, do you have correspondence?
Where to start? Sorry, you missed it. So we had one article that we captured about the new football field, athletic field, that we shared with the board.
Thanks, thank you, Brian. Okay, commendations, good news. Go ahead, Lil, you ready?
Yep, I'm ready. The only thing I really have to say tonight is I'm super grateful that myself, as well as Carly Gilman, are the chair and co-chair of our homecoming committee, and we are very excited to get started tomorrow morning with homecoming planning.
Awesome.
It's always one of my favorite weeks.
Yay, congratulations.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Wendy?
And just for all of our families at home from all of our schools, it was a fantastic first week of school, so we're very appreciative of everybody's support. I'd also like to mention that the first ever Mountain View football game happened this past Sunday, and they were able to participate at the new turf field. Though the contest did not go how we wanted it to go, the boys are working really hard that are on that team, so congratulations to them on their first game.
Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else? Commendations, good news? Go ahead, Jenny.
I would like to thank the police officers for being at our schools on the first couple of days of school. I know, living off of Tibbetts Hill Road, it was wonderful to have police officers there so that we could get home in a timely fashion. I'd also like to thank Crispin's House for their donation of 30 backpacks for children who needed a new backpack. I know that the list from teachers this year was very expensive, and so for kids to have a backpack that was filled with those items was really great, and I know that that donation was very costly, so thank you. And also, thank you to Crispin's House for the work that they did with students during the summer when school was out. And also, commendation for the people that donated towards the turf field. I was able to go to the game this week, and, oh my gosh, it is so cool. And having been an alumni of this school, and just the fields that, over the years, our teams played on, this was just like amazing. And I hope that we have some alumni games on that field, because that would be really awesome.
Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else? Commendations, good news? All right, seeing none. So the next is public comment. So I'm going to stand up so that people behind me can hear. You all got an agenda when you got in, and a list of what the board expects during public comment. I want everybody to remember, we are in our high school. We have students at our table, we have students in the audience. Let's show them that we can be civil to our neighbor even if we don't agree. You have a list, I'm going to start, or you're going to read off the names. You'll come, there is no questions and answers, sir. You'll come to the microphone, state your name and address. At that time, Caroline will start at the three-minute mark. At two minutes, she'll raise a flag to say you have one minute. I ask that you finish up. I want to be able to give every single person on that list an opportunity to talk. After 30 minutes, I have a right to shut this down if you don't behave. There is no question and answers. There is no derogatory remarks. You do not call anybody out by name. I expect the comments to be civil, respectful, and clean, okay? So when I call your name out, and no clapping, cheering, snapping, any rude remarks. It just makes it very hard for the next person to speak. Nobody should be intimidated to come to this board and talk. The board wants to hear from all of you. Thank you so much. All right, so the first name.
All right, I'm going to do my best not to butcher anyone's name, but no promises. Mr. Platt?
Yes, thank you for listening to me. If at any time I have a pained expression on my face, it's got nothing to do with any comments agreeing with me or disagreeing with me.
Fred, start with your name and address, please.
Fred Platt, 29 Myway. I did say my name. Fred Platt, 29 Myway, Goffstown, New Hampshire.
Thank you, Fred.
Agreeing with me or disagreeing, the pain is because I just coming out of the hospital for the second time with back surgery today. So I'm in a little discomfort. I just wanted to say, and some of these comments may have been made at the last school board I didn't make, I want to thank Superintendent Balky for pulling that poster out of the library at the middle school. And say that, first of all, in case I'm called a bigot or anything like that, I don't care if someone's gay, straight, trans, whatever. We have, I happen to be a state rep, I'm not here in that capacity, I'm here as a citizen of Goffstown. This, if you look, we have gays and we have trans in the legislature, we get along fine. But if you look at the newspapers, you pick up a radio, listen to a radio, TV, this is a nationwide phenomenon, and it just finally hitting Goffstown. I think this is a deliberate attack of the relationship between parents and children at an age that is totally inappropriate. Let a kid alone, they'll figure out what they are on their own, and whatever that is, that's fine. But I do think this is wrong to push an agenda, that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, Fred.
Next.
Joe Alexander.
Hi, Joe, welcome.
Hi, thanks for having me.
Yes.
I'm trying to speak as loud as possible. For the record, my name is Joe Alexander, I'm one of your state representatives in town. I live on Oakwood Lane. Thank you, Madam Chair, esteemed members of Goffstown School Board. I represent the town of Goffstown and the school board in the State House. There's been a lot going on in town in the last couple of weeks, which was sparked from bulletin board put up in Mountain View Middle School. I've received many calls and emails from constituents on all sides of this issue, and that's why I'm here today. I first want to applaud our superintendent for taking swift action to take down material that violates RSA 186:11-9-C, which requires parental notification in regards to education on human sexuality. This material, if presented, requires the school board to notify parents with a two-week notice and gives parents the right to opt their child out of this material. In order to assist this board, the Department of Education issued a technical advisory regarding objectionable material on September 6, 2023, last week. I have brought copies with me for the school board and members of the public. It is the responsibility of our state reps to listen to constituents and appear occasionally at meetings like these, as other colleagues of mine rightly did at the last meeting. I know from my own experience that strong families prevail in these situations. When I felt comfortable to share being gay, the only thing my parents did would leave from a place of love, support, and compassion, whether they believed in it or not. That is not always the case, and that is why I've been a leader on the state level to identify youth risks to suicide. In 2019, I was part of a passage of bill that required every teacher to go through two hours of suicide awareness and prevention training. In 2021, I was a sponsor on a bill that became law that put the suicide hotline on every student ID in New Hampshire. This year, I have a bill in the education committee that would give students excused absences for mental health reasons. The last bill will go a long way in helping school district identify students that are struggling with mental illness or might just need a little bit more support. In conclusion, I'm here today to ask the school board and administration to put together a concrete policy on how the district will follow RSA 186:11 regarding education around gender, sexuality, gender identity, and in addition, how the school district will notify parents with the proper two-week window. And I'm happy to assist the board or be a part of any committee if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Jana Peterson.
Hi. 235 Blackford Road in Goffstown.
Welcome.
I'm having flashbacks to my middle school days right now, speaking in front of a large group.
Yes.
I want to say thank you to everybody on the board, to start with. I can't imagine how challenging it is. You guys are faced with decisions where you know somebody's going to be upset about it, someone's going to be disappointed, no matter which way you go, and I am just really grateful for what you guys are doing to look out for our kids. I am here because I tell my kids, are you going to find the problem or are you going to find the solution? And I think I should follow that advice. Seven to nine percent of kids identify as LGBTQ. Fifteen percent of kids are physically disabled. Thirty-two percent of kids have a specific learning disability. Nineteen percent of kids have a speech or language impediment, and thirteen percent of kids have a chronic or acute health problem that adversely affects their education. And while LGBTQ kids are almost twice as likely to be bullied, children with a disability are two to three times as likely to be bullied. The definition of inclusive is not excluding any of the parties or groups involved in something. And I think that both sides of the argument, parents can agree that that's the ultimate goal, but the original form of the bulletin board was not inclusive, it was the opposite. I would like to suggest a few ideas for a new board that could speak to all of our kids and help keep them safe. How to find a safe and trusted adult in your life, like a neighbor, an aunt and uncle, a family friend, a favorite teacher. When it's important to talk to one of those trusted adults, if they don't feel safe, if someone is hurting them, if the thoughts they're having are confusing. How to respectfully ask other children about something that makes them different, and teaching kids to celebrate that the differences make everyone special. How to cope with bullying and ways to overcome the challenges that that experience creates. Ultimately, our kids are going to grow up, and if we only focus on sheltering them from that experience, rather than how to move forward through it, we're not doing them any favors. I know that you guys have heard a lot of opinions from a lot of people about what our kids should and shouldn't be exposed to in the public school setting, and I know that my idea will still leave a group of parents unsatisfied, but I'm hoping that this can be a jumping-off point so that we can find a solution that doesn't leave any parent feeling like their kids are seeing something that conflicts with the values that they're being taught at home, and also give our kids the resources and support that they need to navigate their adolescence.
Thank you. Anybody that, just before we go to the next person, anybody that wrote their comment down, Mrs. Moran would like it so that we can make sure we have it accurate in the record. So before you leave tonight, if you can just hand it to her. It's hard.
If you have a written, if you have a written thing that you're reading from, if you'd like to leave it, you can leave it with us, we'll make sure that we include it in the minutes.
Yeah. The microphones are for people on the TV, so unfortunately, you may not be able to hear. We do ask any speakers to just try to speak loud and clear. All right, who's next?
Olivia Welch.
Hi, Olivia, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Goffstown School Board.
Name and address.
My name is Olivia Welch, and I live at 70 Plummer Street in Goffstown.
Thank you.
I currently serve on Goffstown's Budget Committee. My family proudly supports the public school system, respecting and valuing our children's right to a safe, free, and quality education. I have been a lifelong ally of the LGBTQIA+ community, and more recently, I have recognized my own place within this community. I am here tonight because I believe it is of the utmost importance that the rights of all our children be protected. As stated by the U.S. Department of Justice, sex discrimination under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 encompasses discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and transgender status. The use of a person's pronouns is integral to their health and well-being, particularly to those who do not identify as cisgendered. It is important that when children tell us who they are, we believe them. Yale School of Medicine reports, affirming one's identity through the use of an individual's chosen name has been shown to reduce the risk of depression and suicidal behaviors in transgender youth. The respect and usage of a student's pronouns, as well as recognition of their gender identity, has a positive lasting impact on the health and well-being of all children. This was never about a bulletin board. I have discussed the removal of the materials in question with multiple families and students with minors enrolled in our school district. I have found that many students, regardless of their age, gender, and orientation, are concerned that following the removal of this information, they feel less supported in their school environment. This has always been about a child's right to identity, and that sense of identity often starts far before high school or even middle school. UPenn's Graduate School of Education reports, by clearly telling everyone in the room that you respect people of all gender identities, you are telling all your students it's okay to be you. By taking down the bulletin board at Mountain View Middle School, LGBTQIA+ students, employees, and educators no longer have the reminder that their identity matters. UPenn also recognizes the grammatical concerns of using "they" as a pronoun, stating, growing up, many of us were taught that "they" was only for groups of people. Those rules have changed, and "they" or "them" is now a non-binary way to address anyone. Merriam-Webster reports that "they" has been used as a singular pronoun since at least the 1300s. Language, as well as a child's developmental, or child's development and identity, continues to grow, change, and evolve. The way that a child interacts with their world deeply affects their education, growth, and adult relationships in lives. Middle school is not too young to discuss preferred pronouns and gender identity, as gender-based bullying is frequently experienced at these grade levels. The Human Rights Campaign advises that gender-based bullying has a high frequency of occurrence in elementary schools and needs to be interrupted and addressed by educators. Be mindful not to put transgender or non-binary students in the position of teaching other children about their identity. That is the job of the educator and not the student. It can jeopardize a student's safety.
It's been about three minutes now.
I ask you to keep all our children in mind when listening tonight.
Thank you so much.
Next up, Naomi Major.
Hello, welcome.
Hi. Naomi Major, 11 Lesnick Road. Thank you to the school board for your service and time, thank you to Mr. Balky for your responsiveness and communication style. Most of the research I cite is listed in the National Library of Medicine, and I'll provide a copy for my sources. There's a hyper-focus on issues surrounding gender philosophy and a growing effort to include that at every grade level in Goffstown. I'm speaking to inform the board that the current science does not strongly support this and in fact raises some serious concern. Proponents of gender-affirming care often cite statistics found on the TrevorProject.org site as compelling data. I took a closer look at the numbers, it's undeniable, they're not good. I continued to look at this science and found that many articles that support gender-affirming care, including the Trevor Project, use a non-random sampling method. It's inexpensive way to gather research, but it loses objectivity, resulting in research and selection bias, and it does not rise to the scientific rigors that a controlled study does. Why does this matter? Number one, because the very data used to demand societal change is not objective. It fails to include, it outright overlooks key contributing factors to the trans-suicide rate, such as prevalence of chronic health conditions, psychiatric illness, and drug abuse, and that they have the highest burden of health conditions relative to all other groups. Given the well-established medical complexity and fragility of these individuals, our schools have no business asking teachers and staff to participate or advise in any way on these issues. That the safest approach is individualized whole health consisting of their doctor, functional medicine docs, therapists, and families, period. Anything that varies from that is reckless. Reason number two, the data matters, there's an inexplicable and deeply concerning lack of controlled studies looking at the long-term effects, and that despite professional recommendations to consider gender-affirming interventions, the long-term effect of such interventions on mental health is largely unknown. I did find a retrospective long-term study that assessed the mental health of trans individuals over 30 years. The study found that overall mortality for sex-reassigned persons was higher during follow-up, particularly death from suicide, suicide attempts, and inpatient psychiatric care. Are we all grasping the significance of this? The best science we have indicates that gender-affirming interventions could be potentially devastating to our youth. The school board needs to use extreme caution. Reason three, the data matters, the data as we have it today will not hold up in a medical, legal challenge, and this may open up the district and the teachers to a delusion of lawsuits. Just this past August in California, a judge awarded a family $100,000 for this exact reason.
Naomi, it's three minutes.
Okay, last sentence.
Okay.
Continuing down this path may have staggering legal consequences, and worse, the very real potential of causing harm to our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Who's next?
I believe it is Helen Barrow, 182 Elm Street.
Thank you, you were close.
Hi, welcome, Helen.
182 Elm Street. And I don't have a speech prepared. I am a retired teacher from Milford, and I am also married to a woman, and I also grew up in a very conservative religion, went to a very conservative college. Then I went to Penn State, was not conservative, and I figured out that there was nothing wrong with me. I had nobody telling me that there was nothing wrong with me. I had a doctor telling me that the next time he saw me, that I should be walking down the street, holding a man's hand, because that's what was right. When people have those messages, they feel that there's something wrong with them. I'm not teaching anybody about my sexuality, good God, nobody wants to know about that. My point is, I want people to feel that they are important, that they are fine. No matter what their message is, no matter how they're feeling, they need to have somebody who is listening. And what's happening is, you're closing down teachers' voices. People are saying, tell a trusted adult, tell a teacher. You tell the teacher, now the teacher has to go and tell the parent. Well, the child was counting on you not telling the parent. They're trying to figure their lives out. You remember when you were a kid, you didn't want your parents knowing every thought you had, right? You want to talk about it with other people. So this is not about teaching an agenda, it's about helping the kids to feel safe and accepted, and that whatever they're feeling is right, it's for them, it's who they are, we're not judging them or who they're going to be, who they want to be. That's all I have, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Helen.
Next up is Sean Santino.
Correct.
Hi, Sean, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. Sean Santino, 96 Patty Hill Road, Goffstown. Good evening, I come to you tonight in support of all students and the staff, as well as the reinstatement of the bulletin board that has been posted in Mountain View for the last several years. I also come to offer a point of view free from religion or politics, but rather data. Most people learn more visually than just by listening, so I will try to bring everyone on a journey with me. Let's imagine this room is full of parents with a child who identify as part of the LGBTQIA+ Look around the room. Now note that your child is four times more likely to attempt suicide than their peers. Every 45 seconds, an LGBT, a student or youth, attempts suicide. Eighty LGBTQ youth will have attempted suicide during this three-hour meeting. Now let's divide this room in half, right and left. Research shows that that number, that the right side of this room's child will have seriously contemplated or attempted suicide in the next year. These estimates, that have already been discussed, are about seven percent of the population identify as LGBTQ. That equates to roughly 23 million people in the United States. Now let's equate that down to Goffstown. That would put 193 students in the school district as identifying as LGBTQ. With that number, 87 attempts or serious consideration of suicide this year out of the number of students in Goffstown. My friend of over 30 years lost her son Jamison for this reason, lost him to suicide. Jamison was a gifted intellectually and artistic student who committed suicide at 15. What did Shannon do? The only thing she did wrong was she said on the wrong side of the room. Her son was one of the half that considered or attempted suicide in that year. What I ask you, Board, Superintendent, our elected representatives in this room, clergy and parents, is what are we going to do to make sure that we reduce the risk of suicide to all students, not just the straight students? How do we go to impact everybody? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean.
Next up, Brian Ibsen Johnson.
Hi, Brian, welcome.
Brian Ibsen Johnson, 10 Clinton Street, Goffstown, New Hampshire. I come here today with a heavy heart concerning the comments expressed by some of our citizens here in Goffstown at the most recent school board meeting, and an anti-bullying, gender-affirming bulletin board at Mountain View Middle School that was taken down. I would like to believe that our school's administration and board are concerned about raising our children in a loving and understanding environment for all students and residents. With that goal in mind, it is my hope that you will consider how this type of information would allow our students to grow into compassionate and caring adults. Some in the community call this bulletin board a means of indoctrination of our children into the LGBTQ lifestyle, or providing them confusing messages about gender identity. The American Psychiatric Association published Key Recommendations for School Administration in 2015, citing the importance of inclusive and welcoming environments for all of our students. This is done by part, in part, by creating a school where administration, faculty, staff, and students feel included regardless of their individual differences, including gender expression. I feel that the bulletin board in question was a reminder to our students to be kind and supportive to all groups of students. Its message was not one of indoctrination, but one of care for each of our students and our student body. I hope that it is our school's administration and board will take a moment to consider all of our students' well-being. It's not enough to simply support our students. We must be called to a higher purpose of supporting all of our students. This includes our gender-diverse population. I ask that you do not make decisions on the well-being of our student population based on a single comment session. It is not in the best interest of our community to raise students that are not supportive of the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Karen Monaski, 22 Rochambeau.
Hi, Karen, welcome.
Good evening, thank you for listening to my comment. Karen Monaski, 22 Rochambeau Street, Goffstown. Please speak up, we can't hear you right here. Oh, I'm sorry, you can't hear. Karen Monaski, 22 Rochambeau Street, Goffstown, New Hampshire. I wanted to thank the Superintendent for your swift action, taking down the bulletin board that violated the law, RSA 186:11, about parental notification around human sexuality. This law allows a notification period and an opt-out for specific course materials based on a parent's determination that said material is inappropriate for that particular child, their particular child. I also want to reiterate that there's a difference between raising a child and educating a child. The raising is what the parents do, and the educating is something that is a shared, something that's shared. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Helen.
Next up, Frank Hobbs.
Hi, Frank, welcome.
Hello. Frank Hobbs.
Frank Hobbs, 119 Dana's Park Road, Gostown, New Hampshire. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Good evening ladies and gentlemen, I am a Gostown resident and concerned parent. I'm extremely concerned about the particular whiteboard that we've been talking about displaying opinion about human sexuality and sexual education that was displayed at the Mountain View Middle School. This whiteboard contained material that clearly violates New Hampshire RSA 186-11-9-C. I'm gonna read a little bit from, I'm gonna call it 186 going forward. 186 requires the State Board of Education to require school districts to adopt a policy allowing an exception to specific course material based on apparent or legal guardian's determination that the material is objectionable. Such a policy shall also require the school district or classroom teacher to provide parents and legal guardians not less than two weeks' advance notice of curriculum course material used for instruction of human sexuality or human sexual education. Another portion of RSA 186 that's in the technical advisory. RSA 186 requires not less than two weeks' advance notice to parents of curriculum course material used for instruction of human sexuality and human sexual education. RSA 193-E2-A in turn defines curriculum as meaning the lessons and academic content taught in school or in specific course or program. The notice requirement as noted above similarly applies to instruction of human sexuality and human sexual education to the extent it takes place in any other school programming. In short, the notice provisions of RSA 186 are not limited to health and sex education class materials, rather, the notice provision of the statute is triggered by the nature of the curriculum course material itself and not by the specific instructional setting. That whiteboard was not an appropriate use of Gostown resident tax dollars, especially for dissemination to middle school aged children, who at that age are very impressionable. Our schools should be for reading, writing, arithmetic and other educational subjects, not indoctrination camps of personal lifestyle propaganda. Parents gave birth to their children, parents raised their children, guided their children, nurtured their children. I believe that parents should be the final arbiters of their child's education. RSA 186 clearly sets the parents as the final arbiters of their children's education, and I believe the residents of Gostown see parents as the final arbiter of their education. Thank you.
Thank you Frank.
Next up Lauren Dukas.
Sorry, heard me? Sorry.
Hi Lauren, welcome.
Thank you Madam Chair, Lauren Dukas, 23 Ginger Drive. I am deeply disturbed by the events that transpired following your previous public comment session. I of course do not hold this board responsible for the opinions expressed by the public as disheartening as they were to here, but you are responsible for what happens next. I appreciate the public communication from the Superintendent's office regarding the removal of the Mountain View Middle School bulletin board. While I understand some may view the terms trans, queer, sexual orientation, and others described in the poster as controversial, political or age inappropriate, they are not. They are some people's state of being and acknowledgement is not indoctrination. By removing visibility and appropriate terminology from our middle school, this board has effectively sanctioned the restriction of education and speech, and has advocated optically for our erasure. I feel this board has always worked to foster a school culture of acceptance and inclusion where learning can occur and students can grow. I implore you now to continue that good work. If the bulletin board did not follow an approved curriculum or follow parental notice requirements, I urge the Curriculum and Education Committee to immediately start a discussion on updating that policy. I speak to you today as a paraprofessional in an elementary Manchester school where we have kindergarten aged children learning about pronouns and people and families of all structures. It is being done. I speak to you as a parent of four children who understands parental rights. I choose to send two of my children to an alternative educational environment, but my parental rights begin and end with my own child. My own beliefs do not extend to any other child, nor should it dictate public education for the common good by censuring free speech. If Gostown schools wish to engender a spirit of acceptance for our students, look to our neighboring districts, it is still being done. I ask you to rectify this policy oversight and give us the best tools and update us to effectively take a stand against discrimination, to reclaim your responsibility to all students, and to give your educators the tools they need to that end. Thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you Lauren.
Next up Jacinia Ferris.
Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Jacinia Ferris, I live at 40 Henry Bridge Road. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a senior at GHS and like the most of the kids at GHS, I also went to Mountain View Middle School.
Jacinia, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but can you just speak up a little bit?
Yes.
Thanks.
Speaking tonight is the last thing I would have expected to be doing my second week of senior year, but I'm here to ask for that the bulletin board at NVMS be restored to the way that it was. I'm here to support my friend who is our student representative, and I'm here because I have a little sister who's gay, and I love my sister, and I want to protect my sister. Like a lot of queer kids, my sister came out to us around the end of elementary school. She has always had the opportunity to go to school in either Bedford or Gostown, because her mother lives in Bedford, but I always wanted her to go to school with me in Gostown. Every year I would try to convince her that Gostown was better, and tell her how much fun we'd have being in the same school, but this year I'm honestly very relieved that Sky goes to school in Bedford, where on the first day of middle school, resources for LGBTQ kids were prominently displayed. Where there was a club she could join, where her pronouns are recognized, and where the student body is united in recognizing and including LGBTQ kids. Bedford has done a great job creating an inclusive environment and community and acceptance, and my sister crushed it all the way through middle school and had a great experience there. I think that's what the majority of the people in Gostown want for all the kids here too. I know I had a great experience at Mountain View Middle School, so it made me really sad to see the lies being spread about the school online, and to see that the lying and misinformation is coming directly from elected officials and in some cases their wives. Getting ready to apply for college really makes you think about where you come from, and I love our town, and I don't want it to be known as the town that pretends gay kids don't exist in their middle school, because that's embarrassing. Educated people know that LGBTQ kids exist in every single middle school in America. They are not an ideology or a lifestyle, they are human beings with the right to attend public school and to be acknowledged and supported, just like the straight kids. I know that some parents don't want to acknowledge that their kids, that kids like my sister even exist until they believe it's developmentally appropriate for their own child, but the bulletin board should not have been taken down to placate those parents. That's allowing a tiny fraction of the parents to dictate what is happening to the entire student body based on their limited beliefs, beliefs of which could put kids like my sister in danger. Please consider reinstating the bulletin board to the way it was, and please make decisions that contribute to every student being treated equally and fairly, instead of cowering to the few parents that think kids like my sister should hide who they are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheila Brooke.
Shelley.
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 Sorry.
Sorry.
It's all right, it's probably the handwriting. When I was in seminary, I learned to write my keys that way, and they are Greek, so it's a combination of English and Greek on the page for you.
Hi Shelley, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Chaplain Shelley Brooke, MDV, I live at 120 Mountain Road, Gostown. My pronouns are she/her/hers. I live there with my wife Rebecca, who is a nurse at Concord Hospital. Together we have six children in this great district of ours, a fourth grader at Maple Lab, two in seventh grade, including one with the suit over there, and one on that brand new Mountain View football team, playing running back. And then freshman, sophomore and junior. So to say that our hands are busy is true, and to say that we have a stake in this is also true. Now my calling as a chaplain gives me the opportunity and privilege to serve this community and our surrounding neighbors, to enter their homes, to enter their sacred stories, and trust me, I work alongside many with whom there are deep disagreements. And hear me, service, service is not about an agenda. Service is about being present. It is about being a voice for those who do not often have a voice or a seat at the table. As a queer woman, I experience the cost every day of living an authentic, visible witness to love in this world. Every day. Sometimes in places of worship, in our jobs, grocery stores, coffee shops, the football field, families of origin, music concerts, and yes, even in our schools. Ask any of us our stories, there are too many to share. And if that's not you, if you find yourselves in a position of privilege, please, don't hear that as a criticism, but instead as an invitation, an invitation to be interrupters of injustice, an invitation to lift up the voices that are continually pushed to the margins, excluded, condemned, silenced and sometimes quite literally erased. This is more than any agenda, script, narratives or repeated soundbites or talking points, this is a life-saving witness. And since so much of this conversation has centered on pronouns, in this community, our pronouns are not meant to be us or them, it is we. We. And we means all of us, all of us. So I ask the board to do far more than replace a bulletin board at the middle school that was already there for years, not in curriculum but outside our guidance office, so people felt safe, welcome and seen. So instead I ask us that we do much bigger and better, and create opportunities for all of us to have brave compassionate spaces where we aren't just accepted, but celebrated and seen. My words a blessing for all of us tonight, no matter where we sit or stand. Thank you for existing. Thank you for existing in your authentic selves, just as you are. May we truly be we in Gostown.
Thank you Shelley. No, no. No clapping.
Josh Carbonell.
Josh, did they hear you?
Might be Jack. Thirty-five Shirley Park Road, sorry Jack.
It's all right. God is truly my given name, it's a gift from God. I'm Jack Carbonell, 35 Shirley Park. I have lived in Gostown for all but three of my sixty years. I coached at GHS soccer for sixteen, eighteen years, I don't remember which anymore, and all three of my kids went through all the school systems of Gostown. I am here in support of all children and their right to a safe and inclusive learning environment. My first point would be to speak to the public who think that this is a religious issue. My question to you is, who did Jesus say was unworthy of love, acceptance and safety? And who did Jesus condemn to hell? To the school board, the religious point is mu. There is a separation of church and state. The schools and the school boards mandate is to create a safe and accepting learning environment for all children. Who is made to feel unsafe by a bulletin board and guidance? How does a bulletin board about pronouns and personal feelings make kids unsafe? How does taking down parts of an existing bulletin board make parts of a marginalized community feel safe and accepted? Add to that bulletin board, if you need to include others, so they can feel safe and accepted, but do not take it down, because that is in fact bullying, in my humble opinion. The fact is, there always has been and always will be LGBTQ plus students throughout our school system. Our denial of them does not make their existence in our communities less present, but it does perpetuate a culture of ignorance and cruelty among our students. And then for those who say that we're only supposed to teach academics in school, I would think that the Mountain View Middle School mission statement speaks to that. Mountain View Middle School is a safe and encouraging learning environment where all students are engaged in rigorous and inclusive learning experience designed to meet social, emotional, physical and intellectual needs. Then I would point at the school board's guiding principles voted on by this school board here. Number four, each student in Gostown School District has the right to an academic environment which allows him and her to grow both intellectually and personally. Number seven, schools must be a safe place in which a full range of learning and intellectual exploration can take place. Safe schools respect and encourage the open exchange and examination of different ideas, beliefs and opinions.
Jack, it's been three minutes.
Number nine, all members of the Gostown academic community must be held to the highest standard. The academic community, both individually and collectively, must create and maintain a caring, supportive, rigorous learning environment if the promise of high quality education is to be realized. Thank you.
Thank you Jack.
Tony Smelt.
My name is Anthony Smelt, 95 Henry Bridge Road.
Hello Anthony, welcome.
Thank you for having me, thanks for being able to speak, Mr. Superintendent. On the third dot you have on this printed paper you gave us, it says, be respectful, please model good civic engagement and behavior for our students. Thank you for taking down the board to prevent, or to promote, mental illness for my students and non-revealed, thank you very much.
Thank you sir.
Kyle Hubbard.
Hi, I'm Kyle Hubbard, 42 Pine Crest Drive, Gostown. And I speak today on behalf of my wife who crafted this. She's not here, so I'm going to read it as well, and something that we crafted together. So I agree with many parents who last time and this time expressed the belief that instruction on matters of gender and sexuality falls outside the role and realm of schools, at least at the junior high level. But I also, we also work continually to teach all of our children to treat others with kindness, with respect, and this should certainly be a focus in school too. But I hope as we go forward that this can be done without any accompanying agenda, and I hope it's something that we can actually model for our kids, because our kids are going to enter a world where not everybody is going to agree with them. So how do we teach each one of our children to both share their convictions and who they are, and the fullness of who they are, but also be able to recognize that not everybody is going to agree with them? How can they learn to live with that tension? I hope as we go forward, and as the, as Mountain View follows the recommendations as others have said about following the law and parental consent, but even if the middle school, after that consent, continues to address issues of gender and sexuality, my hope would be that there would be a way to actively address this reality that there are multiple viewpoints, and respecting one another and our differences is healthy pluralism. I can respect the desire for many in the LGBTQ plus community to feel seen, to feel cared for, care for each one of our children. But my concern is that as we move forward beyond this bulletin board, we think about ways, how to teach our kids to think and speak on these issues that don't lead to deeper polarization. Is there a way, especially for students who don't share the views as originally represented on that bulletin board, and for families that don't, that they would be represented to express their beliefs in a way that will not be interpreted as an act of aggression, fear, ignorance, homophobia or what? homophobia, or whatever else, but based on deep convictions that guide their behavior? And can my children, who I teach that to, can they actually learn to see the other side? That's what I hope we do at our schools. So thank you.
Thank you.
For your work.
Next up, Kirsty Hazelbaker.
Hi, welcome.
I'm Kirsty Hazelbaker, twenty-three Timeway, Goffstown. I'm here to kind of take a little bit of a left turn and talk about ethics and bullying outside of school. My daughter was put in a terrible situation last week. My daughter is Lily. Involving a board member and his wife. For context, I'm not going to name any names.
No names.
For context, she is the person who at the last meeting spoke about standing outside the schools with posters of mutilated transgender children. I'm sorry. This member's wife received copies of the public comment to the board. Whether she used the appropriate forms or if they were just shown to her, I do not know. In her email to the board, she included my daughter Lily, who is a minor, as a recipient. As a student and a minor, Lily's email is not available on the school board page. I can only deduce that she got this email from her husband. In the email, no adult was named, but my child, a bright, involved, respected member of the community who just happens to be gay, was named four times. She was told that she suffered from a contagion that made her take offense even when there was none, and that she could simply rectify the problem by paying closer attention. This was condescending and patronizing, even more when you realize it is coming from a former educator in our district. In a follow-up email, after I asked her not to contact Lily again, she told me that if Lily wanted to preserve her privacy, she should have only emailed the superintendent, and she hoped that this would help teach my daughter a lesson on how to handle herself in the future. This email was then shared to the public on her public social media page with my child's full name. This is reckless and harmful. It is cyberbullying. Our schools teach students to be good online citizens. I know, I work in the media center at the middle school. This is not that. That public post has now been shared twice. I do not know where or to who. This board member's wife has a history of anti-LGBTQ rants and religious zealotry on her social media and public comments. These people are not the group of people that I would entrust with any of your children's information. None of this would have happened had this board member chosen not to share this information with his spouse. I very much feel in this case that his duty was to step in to protect a student and not just watch these events unfold. Many of here do not agree on much, but I hope every parent here can agree on this. Imagine this being your son or your daughter taunted by an adult via email and on social media.
It's been three minutes.
It is not illegal, but it is inexcusable. I appeal to the board that this be addressed immediately and appropriate action be taken. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kirsty.
Next up.
Why are the children present? I don't understand.
There's no, 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 no.
Whoa, 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 people.
No. You need to be quiet.
Let's not do this, okay?
You need to be quiet. She has every right. She is our student rep. I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear. It's up to the parent, because their parents want them to.
That's what's wrong.
You need, listen, I am giving you a warning. One warning. No. Everybody settle down or I'm going to shut it down. You guys have been good so far. Enough. This is not how we present ourselves. We have children in this room. I will not tolerate any more from you. Please be quiet. Who is the next speaker?
Laura Adams.
Laura Adams.
I have no personal complaints either, but that was.
Can you please be quiet? Do you need to step outside?
Laura Adams.
Hi, Laura, welcome.
Patty Hill. If I wasn't nervous before, I'm really nervous.
I am very sorry about that.
I come to you today as a retired teacher with over twenty-five years of experience teaching K through twelve in the public schools. Please bear with me, I'm really nervous.
Nobody can hear you.
She's doing the best she can. If you can't hear.
Yep.
I haven't been compelled to attend a school board meeting in decades, and this is sort of like being called to the principal's office, so I am nervous.
It's okay. Take a breath.
I believe educators want all students to leave their schools well-rounded and ready to face the world intellectually, physically, socially, and emotionally, armed with the ability to see all sides of an issue and figure out what is best for them to find their own way. In order to do this, they need to know that they have multiple places to go for answers, whether it be a book, a trusted individual, or a bulletin board. Depriving students of finding the information they seek by banning books or removing bulletin boards is not the way. They've talked a lot about the bulletin boards, and I hope that another one will come up, so I won't talk about that. You are your children's first teacher and hopefully role model for their life, although along the way, your children are going to teach you a lot of precious lessons about life, too. Parents have always had a say in what their children learns. It's nothing new. The curriculum is available for all to see. Parents can ask for alternate assignments if they are uncomfortable with a topic, book, or assignment. This way, they won't infringe on another parent's right for their child to gain this information. In my experience with my own children, I have found these uncomfortable topics provide a great conversation starter, a time to discuss your feelings and values while hearing their opinions at the same time. Your children know a lot more than you think. What a teacher is hoping for is critical thinking, not indoctrination. I'm so tired of hearing the false negative about indoctrination of students. Thank you for the opportunity to express my feelings and support all the teachers and staff and above all, the students that make Goffstown schools great. It is my wish that someday people can join together and provide love and acceptance and support for each other as we did on nine eleven all those years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josiah Asseltine.
My name is Josiah Asseltine, and I live on one-twenty Mountain Road. I attend Mountain View Middle School, and I'm in the seventh grade, and I live in a house with many queer community siblings and parents. And I'd just like to mention that what I've heard today is very disappointing of the outcome of all the decisions that the school board has made in the past few weeks. And yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Robbie Boyd.
This is child abuse. I'll see y'all later. Should never ever be happening in this setting. Get out of here, Jackie.
No, please don't say anything. Just let him leave. Please do not say anything.
Hi, you're welcome.
Thank you. I'm Robbie Boyd at two Reed Street in Goffstown. I'm going to try and talk loudly as I was sitting at the back there.
Yes.
I believe that my neighbors who represented their views at the last school board meeting were doing so out of a concern for our town's children, and as a father of two Mountain View Middle School students, I genuinely appreciate that concern. However, I have to disagree with their position. The poster in question was neither graphic nor age inappropriate, and if a child saw it and didn't understand the content, they would do what children always do in that context. They either ignore it, or they ask for more information, at which point their parents would communicate their family's values and beliefs. A poster will not make a child question their sexuality, nor their gender identity. It may, however, be a small signal to a child who is already walking what can be a phenomenally lonely road, that they are seen and supported. Ultimately, this is not about a single poster in an office. We need clarity on what our schools will communicate to our LGBTQ youth and to their classmates. In 2023, no child is learning about the existence of non-straight people from a poster in their counselor's office. I urge you to research best practice on these issues and create a policy that is clear and supportive that all staff follow. This is about our children, my children's lives, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Amy Daniels.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. My name is Amy Daniels, eighty-eight Bunker Hill Road, New Boston. I've lived at that address for twenty-two years next month. I'm a former New Boston Central School teacher, where I happily taught for over six years. I am a parent of two. One is a Goffstown High School 2023 graduate, the other is currently a Goffstown High School junior. My husband, their father, is a Goffstown High School graduate, as is his mother. On behalf of our family, with multi-generational deep roots in the community, I would like to thank the school board, administrators, teachers, and staff for all that you do in service of students and families. It does, in fact, take a village to raise and educate our children. As a citizen invested in her community, having watched the recording from the last session of this meeting, I felt compelled to come out tonight to speak. I represent the polite and often far-too-quiet majority who support a safe, welcoming, caring, inclusive community for all. The issue raised by many folks at last meeting left me thinking mostly about one thing: safety. Our most fundamental and basic need as humans is safety, both physical and psychological. The longstanding consistent message from guidance counselors is inclusion. Listening to other viewpoints is an inclusive behavior. I watched and listened with an open mind and open heart. I am an empathetic and compassionate person. I wish for all of us to model this behavior for all of our children. What I know to be true is that we often don't have the luxury as parents to decide exactly when to have difficult conversations with our children. For some families in our community, having a conversation about LGBTQ plus youth could present a challenge. I do understand that. But what I know to be true and most important is that we all support creating safe, affirming, and welcoming spaces for all of our children, regardless of how they identify, what their abilities may or may not be, et cetera. In the interest of less division and more unity, I stretched myself and dug deep to understand a point of view different than my own. I implore all folks to do the same. That said, the word indoctrination was repeatedly misused at the last meeting and a bit tonight as well in public comment, and that needs to be called out. Indoctrination, when used in an educational context, essentially means to instruct or to teach. It is clear to me that there is no intent on the part of SAU nineteen teachers or staff to indoctrinate or to impose or push a perceived agenda or ideology upon students.
It's been three minutes, Amy.
Got it. I'll just skip that last bit and say my purpose in speaking this evening is to express gratitude for your selfless work in an increasingly challenging environment and to be a voice for student safety and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Kyle Burton.
Thank you. My name is Kyle Burton, and I live at five Hague Street. I want to thank the board for honoring a process that allows me to come in and have public comment. And I have a few things to say. First, I am absolutely disgusted by the sexualization of this topic. I have an eight-year-old and a five-year-old who understand transgenderism. Not once has sex come up. Don't let hyperbole and sexualized language cloud the objective facts here. One, transgenderism exists. Two, sexual acts are not being discussed. Three, employees of the district are not performing medical procedures. I would like to also address the RSA being brought up in opposition to this poster, that if objection to the pronouns used based on the grounds that if they, sorry, that if objection to pronoun use based on the grounds that it constitutes sexual education, well, by extension, that would imply that the use of cisgender pronouns is also sexual in nature. For parity, this is just absolutely madness and should expose the obvious discrimination here. I'd also like to point out, in a former professional life, I taught high school chemistry for five years. Calling someone by something they don't want to be called is an easy way to erode the basic trust necessary to teach anyone, period, child or adult. You need that foundation in the classroom, that safe environment, so that people feel comfortable for learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Next up, Diane McCarthy.
Good evening. So for the record, Diane McCarthy, one-sixteen Mountain Base Road in Goffstown. I am the very proud Executive Director of Crispin's House Coalition for Youth, former three-term school board member, and mother of two former students. It is through this lens that I am here tonight to respectfully share my concerns about the actions taken regarding the LGBTQ Inclusive Mental Wellness Board at Mountain View Middle School. In the spirit of time, I'm not going to get into the stats around the suicide risk for LGBTQ youth. I trust that by now you are all well aware that we are talking about your most vulnerable population. What I do wish to address is the concept of protective factors. Protective factors are traits or resources that reduce the likelihood of negative outcomes, and this is for everybody, not a specific demographic. Examples include effective coping skills, support from friends and family, a sense of belonging, a feeling of connectiveness to school and community. This body could, and I would argue should, function as a protective factor for our kids. However, what I saw two weeks ago was anything but. Between the only statements uttered on the topic being wholly unsupportive, the silence of any potential allies, and the immediate removal of the inclusive materials, there wasn't a protective factor to be seen last meeting. In fact, I am so very deeply saddened and concerned to report that the net effect of what took place was to make many of your students feel less safe, less valued, and more marginalized. You hurt kids. Specific to LGBTQ youth, protective factors include living in a community that is accepting of LGBTQ people, having at least one accepting adult, and if I achieve nothing else by coming here tonight, let me say in no uncertain terms, I am an accepting adult. For middle and high schoolers, having access to a GSA, teachers respecting pronouns and seeing symbols of inclusion such as the bulletin board in question are all protective factors. The Goffstown School District that I know and love has a decades-long history of acceptance and commitment to the well-being of our kids. Your suicide prevention policy, as well as your bullying video, both declare the district's commitment to protecting the health, safety, and welfare of its students, and affirming all students' right to attend our schools, to feel safe, secure, and valued. Have we lost our way? To its credit, the Goffstown community itself has also been laser-focused on the welfare of our youth for over thirty years through the support through organizations such as Crispin's. House and the culture of collaboration that we see among local agencies today. The school district is a key partner here. We are so much better than this. And as long as I have a say about it, we are not going back.
Diane, it's been three minutes.
So in closing, can I disclose?
Yes, go ahead.
I want to remind you that school environments with inclusive curricula are safer learning environments for all youth and have better educational outcomes. So in short, the rising tide lifts all ships. You have a duty to our community's children, not just those in your comfort zone or those that you understand. Please let your words and actions be protective factors for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Next up, Pat Stagno.
How you doing?
Good.
Thank you. My name is Pat Stagno. I live on Elm Street. And I have to forgive me, I have a traumatic brain injury and other injuries that I fought for you to make you have the ability to make a choice. In sister school, they taught us, as well as in the service, to take your hat off when you enter a building. I need to keep mine on because it's a protective for my skull. So I keep it on. I am what you all should be afraid of. I am a lesbian. I was in the service. I have a traumatic brain injury due to fighting for this country, and then they threw me out because I was gay. All right. Peer pressure incited part of what happened to me, part of my trauma. And everybody thought it was great. I was in the service in the 80s. It was not acceptable for women to be beside a man fighting or welding. Fact that I was better than them didn't help. The point is, if we don't give children the opportunity and set an example that to be different is okay, you have a choice, that everybody has a choice, then we're only going to run into the same things that I ran into, and it can only get worse. Because the women that are in the service right now are still fighting the same fight that I fought. And I was just at a retreat, and they said, you know, you laid the groundwork. I did not. It's still there. The old boys' network is still there, was still fighting it. And I was in a man's career. I worked for utilities. I was an OSHA instructor and adjutant at King State College. And I'm here to tell you that if that bulletin board was in a place of business, a labor, and it was a union flyer that was in that cabinet, you would have a problem with the Department of Labor because you have to give everybody that choice. There was no curriculum in that, what do you call it again? Bulletin board. There's no, that's not curriculum. They didn't teach anything that was there. So to have the ability not to see that there are others like you, it's huge. It's a slap in the face. And you're still slapping me in the face. I pretty much had to retire because I could no longer cope. I had a flashback at work. We cleaned up dirty dirt. They didn't tell me that the landfill was right next to a rotten gun club. So when the fire went off, I know I haven't been the same since.
Pat, it's been three minutes.
It happens. You got to give the kids a chance. And parents, people, you have to play together nice. That's it. What does it take to be nice?
Thank you, Pat.
Crystal Delaney.
Delahunte.
Delahunte, thank you. Sorry, Crystal.
Hi, Crystal, thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Crystal Delahunte, Norman Road. Kind of nervous to give the number, not going to lie. I'm very nervous to be here tonight, and pretty much everything I have written down has been said by other people. I think the bottom line here is it's not about the bulletin board. Whether or not it goes against the RSA, I have no idea. But I'm going to give you an idea of what it was like to grow up gay, okay? In high school, it was tough. You weren't allowed to be gay in high school. Every time you turned a corner, you heard a derogatory term, you heard somebody making fun of you or somebody else. And it was tough. But that one sticker on a teacher's door that nobody else knew what it meant, it was a rainbow sticker. Now everybody knows, right? Rainbows are fun. But that sticker was a private message to all the gay kids that you were safe here. You can be you. You don't have to hide. So for the 45 minutes I walked in that door, I was safe. And that's what this is all about. There is no sexuality in he, her, they, them. There are no body parts. Nobody on that poster was in a bed or doing any sexual acts. It's about using the proper pronouns. And let's be honest, most of the kids inside that middle school, unless it, unless it meant something to them because it was them, or unless they've been taught to hate because of the issue, they didn't even notice it, they walk right by it, they don't care. Unless it meant something to them. By taking that down, you sent them a message that hate wins. And I'm really sorry to be on the verge of tears, but as a student or as a parent of two kids in this school district, if you think your middle school kids don't know what sex is, you're on another planet. I'm going to be perfectly honest with you, okay? Because they do. They know. And let me tell you, my high school kid tells me he hears at least one derogatory sexual anti-gay comment in every single class, every single day in the high school. So if it's happening in the high school, the middle school is where you need to start the acceptance. And that is extremely important. Catch it before they get to the high school because it's bad at the high school. And Ms. Kohler, Mr. Balky, if you'd like to know why this is a little more personal, check your email for me, and I'd be happy to have that conversation with you privately. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Kurt Devetter.
Thank you, Heather, lady chair. Kurt Devetter, 536 Black Brook Road. I just am here to support all of the youth, LGBTQ plus IA. I am here because something terrible happened two weeks ago, and I think it was an act of deliberate ambush and attack that was justified by a simple article, but it really has put our youth in jeopardy and in danger. We know the figures that queer youth are more likely to consider and to act on suicidal ideation. We know that this group needs the most support that we can offer them as a school board and as a community. I think that what happened two weeks ago was shameful, and it isn't over. Our response to it, both in terms of coming to an understanding of what the school board can and should provide our students, but also as what we can do to provide for an inclusive and welcoming community for those students. So I hope that all of the youth and the parents out there hear me when I say that when injustice becomes law, resistance becomes duty. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kurt.
Kathy Coughlin, I think.
Hi, Kathy, welcome.
Kathy Coughlin, 83 New Boston Road. I'm speaking for myself tonight. Madam Chairman, thank you for having this extended public comment. It's appreciated. I'm going to kind of sort of echo some other statements, but using correct pronouns is just a basic human decency, and it is suicide prevention. Misgendering somebody can really cause some drastic consequences, and it's a very little act that is easy to do. And having a bulletin board that discusses the differences in certain pronouns is not indoctrination, is not curriculum, it is just understanding. And I feel sad that the board was taken down before a chance for maybe longer consideration and also policy review to see if there was a policy issue with any information that was present. If there was not policy in place, there should be. And hopefully, it is welcoming and inclusive of all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Melanie Renfro Hebert.
Hi, Melanie, welcome.
Hi, thank you so close, sir. It's Melanie Renfro Hebert, but I appreciate the attempt. That list has been long and a bit torturous today. When I walked into the room today, I was very clear about what I was going to talk about, about, I'm so sorry, Melanie Renfro Hebert, 23 College Road. Thank you. I was very clear about what I was going to talk about today, and you cannot be in this space right now and have heard these stories and still think that you can be an expert on anything you have not lived and been in the skin of. So what I'd like to say today is, my wife and I are raising two amazing boys in Goffstown, having made a very deliberate choice to move to this community, not just based on the school system, though that was a big factor, but based on the community and the individuals who live here. I'd still like to say that everyone in this community holds my respect, or at least a chance for understanding, but that some individuals within the community may not feel like that respect is given back to them because of the way that people have values that are different. And it's sad, but I can tell you this from my 11-year-old's point of view. I was concerned about the meeting from two weeks ago. I'm not going to talk about it anymore because it's in the past, and I'm looking towards the future for this. But I mentioned something about a bulletin board, and my son asked me about the bulletin board. He's, why are you so upset about that? And it's because I can't tell him what I'm really upset about is the fact that we are rapidly in New Hampshire and across the country trying to segregate out one group of individuals and take away their voice. It's not just here, it's not just in Goffstown, but it's very amplified in Goffstown in a way that is damaging to the people who go to schools here, to the families who live here and who moved here in hopes of having a community that would support all of us. I still believe that that's true, that we can have that, but I think we need a lot more work to get it done. And I'm grateful to each and every one of you who is at the table and is trying to come to, not a consensus, I won't agree to that, but was trying to come to a solution so that everyone gets their needs met and does not exclude our LGBTQ community in Goffstown, of which I'm very proud to be a member of. Thank you for your time, and thank you all for your patience, and thank you everyone else for being quiet.
Thank you, Melanie. Who's next?
Allison Ryan.
Hi, thank you. My name is Allison Ryan. I live at 46 Noel Crest Road. I'm a resident of Goffstown and a mother of five young children. I'm here to address the school board regarding the bulletin board advocating for acceptance and respect of LGBTQ individuals that was removed from Mountain View Middle School. MVMS and other Goffstown schools strive to create a safe learning environment for all students. Respected organizations such as the American Academy of Pediatrics have released policy statements highlighting the importance of fostering and accepting and supporting an supportive environment for LGBTQ youth in schools. Research has shown that inclusion of anti-bullying materials specifically addressing LGBTQ topics leads to decreased name-calling and a greater likelihood of other peers stepping in to speak up for LGBTQ youth. Anti-bullying education regarding LGBTQ topics and education regarding acceptance gave LGBTQ youth a greater sense of safety and belonging in school. This translated to decreased mental health concerns, including thoughts of suicide, and also made students more likely to reach out for help. While having supportive parents and family is critical for LGBTQ youth, it is not enough to counter the adverse effects of a negative or hostile school environment. A supportive school environment is important for all youth, but especially those who are not supported at home. Schools can foster safe environments for LGBTQ youth by including LGBTQ topics in anti-bullying campaigns, promoting acceptance and respect, providing inclusive learning opportunities, and fostering connections with teachers and counselors who are viewed as supportive. Not only do these measures help to increase feelings of safety and decrease mental health concerns, they also help to improve school attendance, graduation rates, increased GPA, and intentions to pursue post-secondary education. We want Goffstown schools to be a welcoming and safe environment for all students, including our LGBTQ youth, so they can achieve academic success. Please consider these facts in your future planning and decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Reverend Zachary Harmon.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for extending the time for tonight's conversation. My name is Reverend Zachary Harmon. I am a resident and taxpayer here in Goffstown. I live at 9 Spring Street. I'm also an Episcopal priest. My parish is in Hampstead, but I live here in Goffstown. I will keep my comments very brief, and I'm here to emphasize the importance of an inclusive and supportive environment for LGBT youth here in our Goffstown community and schools. If a child or teen is bullied for being gay or for having a non-binary gender, or bullied because their parent is an LGBT person, it is vital for guidance counselors and other school staff to offer supportive environment and helpful accessible resources for that child or teen. The resources should be age-appropriate, but those resources and supports need to be offered in Goffstown schools and available at places like bulletin boards. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey conducted from 2015 to 2019 by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services found that LGBT teens face a high risk of being threatened or bullied, and which in turn had significant adverse effects on LGBT youth's health and well-being. For the health and well-being of the youth of our community, I sincerely hope that this school district will provide a supportive and inclusive environment for LGBT students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Sandra Regazio.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you very much. Hi.
Hi.
My name is Sandy Regazio. I live here in Goffstown at 746 Back Mountain Road. I live here in Goffstown at 746 Back Mountain Road. And I was not at the last meeting. I learned about it from some friends. And obviously this is a divisive topic. I think people have very different values and beliefs on this topic, and they should be respected on both sides. I think putting up the bulletin board in the first place is divisive. That's why you're getting such a kickback. And I think it makes it harder for acceptance, the very acceptance that we want to occur on both sides, because all of us want that. I think acceptance of every, every single child is critical. I couldn't agree on that more. And I actually, in my family, my extended family, we have a young trans child, and we have a couple of gay people. They are beloved, accepted. I may not agree with all of their choices, but that doesn't change the fact of how I love them. But as a taxpayer, I think our education should be about math, English. It shouldn't be about teaching gender, because this is such a divisive issue. And as has been stated here by a number of people in the community, being trans in particular, because I do have a young child in my family that is trans, it creates a lot of additional challenges. I think the parents are concerned that there might be a subtle influence for their children to consider what would be their own gender. And they know that that creates additional challenges going forward. And they don't wanna see that challenge for their children unless it's absolutely essential. And I'm gonna say something else that may be controversial. You know, the person in my family that is trans has an alternate name. I have no problem using that. But I'm very uncomfortable using their pronouns. Because for me, it feels like I'm saying something that's not true. And so for their, I have my own views that also come into play in terms of using pronouns. And I think both of those should be considered. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up Barbara Schult.
Hi Barbara, welcome.
Hi, Ms. Barbara Schult. I live at Honeysuckle Lane in Goffstown. I'm here to show my support for our teachers and our staff at our school, especially Mountain View Middle School. And I'm here out of concern for my community because I was also dismayed after watching the minutes of the video of the school board meeting on August 28. This is not about a book or a bulletin board. The bulletin board was an entry point to rally a group to attack our public schools. A photo was posted on social media to be shared. Wouldn't the respectful and fair action be to approach a teacher or administrator and ask about the bulletin board instead of posting it on social media? But that would not have provided the viral moment. The August 28th public comment period was a coordinated effort to vent hostility toward our public schools and spread unfounded anti-trans, anti-gay fears. And if there's one way to make it hard to hire and retain good teachers, this would be it. Parents spoke of the bulletin board being divisive. What is divisive and disruptive is putting a wedge in place and going for that viral moment rather than discussion or civil discourse. What is divisive are threats from an elected rep about going to the Board of Ed, or a statement from a school board member about this bulletin board possibly becoming an HR matter. The rest of this is gonna be bullet points just to correct some inaccuracies from the August 28th meeting due to time constraints. A parent had mentioned a book, Answers in the Pages. That's actually a Great Stone Facebook, which is a book that is voted on by 4th, 5th, and 6th graders. So it was a peer-recommended book. Ironically, it's actually about a mom who tries to have a book banned at her son's school, and her son Donovan recognizes that this stems from a sense of misplaced care. The summer reading program also provides choice. No student is forced to read a title. Representative Lisa Mazur's statement regarding a student being written up for hate speech as a result of using the wrong pronoun-
Ma'am, wait, can you stop? I would like the name stricken from the minutes.
Is emphatically not true.
Please do not mention names.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I'm striking that from the minutes.
I'm sorry. A statement about a student being written up for hate speech for using the wrong pronoun is emphatically not true. I directly asked this question of the MVMS, the Mountain View Middle School Administration. There was no transgender flag displayed nor any depiction of a transgender flag. Asking teachers to just teach academics is not understanding teaching. In order for a student to be able to focus on the lesson, first and foremost, a child needs to feel welcomed and that they belong in the classroom and in the school. Those that spoke of wishing to be another gender or magically choosing a gender are unfamiliar with the reality of being gay, trans, or non-binary. Teachers teach, and yes, they teach about controversial subjects. Teaching has to be real and connect to a student's life. But they, teachers do not indoctrinate, and they do not try to convert students to ideologies.
Ma'am, we're at three minutes now.
Gender identity is not an ideology. It's not something someone believes in. We can do better as a community. I'd like to see us working together and not let fear push us towards impulsive actions. I encourage the school board to stay strong and develop the needed policies that are apparently missing to protect all of our students.
Thank you.
Next one, I can't read the first name Frost, I think. 72... Yep.
Hi, welcome.
I'm Charity Frost. I live at 72 Saranitas Lane. And I'm here tonight as a Goffstown parent who was concerned also about the conversations in public comment last week, but also wanted to come and share perspective from another parent here in town, myself and my household, as folks that have two children in the system here in Goffstown and adore Goffstown schools. Both of my children have special needs, and they have blossomed in Goffstown. I love this community. I first became acquainted with Goffstown five years before I moved here, when my in-laws moved here. And then a couple of years later, I'm a former school counselor and former Goffstown Main Street Program Director. If you went to the pumpkin regatta the three years before COVID, you're welcome. The last one, I had my daughter Violet on the pumpkin regatta day, 'cause timing. 'Cause that's how life works. But I'm here as a parent and as a community member. I see you guys at Sully's. I pass you at the Y when I take my kids to swim lessons, and so does my ex-husband. And I'm involved in the community. I, you know, I know my neighbors. I show up and volunteer for things still. And even though I'm, you know, no longer with Main Street, I still know the business owners downtown. This is a place that my family chose to be and that we wanna be. And so I wanted to speak as, also though, as a former school counselor in that that bulletin board, that is the type of resources that school counselors pride themselves on, and here's why. So the mission statement of the MVMS School Counselors Department is to provide all students the opportunity to grow academically, personally, and socially. As someone who has designed sex ed programming for an entire school, especially children for, yep, social and emotional development pieces are an enormous part of every topic that you teach. And that's why school counselors and guidance counselors come into all kinds of classrooms and speak to those topics, because we aren't just reading, writing, and arithmetic. It's also human interaction and giving kids a safe place to be who they are and know that they're accepted. The last thing about me is that I'm a queer, non-binary member of this community. And my existence is not controversial, and it's not scary for children. I have children's board books in the back. I'm actually gonna be donating them to the appropriate level schools because there are resources that are adaptable and age-appropriate. If you feel that the information on the bulletin board, which I'm sure was not salacious, and from the other speaking here, it doesn't seem that it was. I was there for a year and a half for anyone even seemed to notice.
Charity, it's three minutes.
Yep. But there are age-appropriate resources out there, and I will be donating some to the Goffstown School District and the Public Library that address these issues. I hope you have a wonderful night, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you Charity.
David Nieman.
Hi David, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is David Nieman. I live at 215 Page Hill Road. And I've heard some very beautifully expressed and eloquent statements tonight. And I'm certainly not going to try to repeat those or top those. I'll just make a few simple statements, which I hope will be clear. First of all, all the discussion about indoctrination and this bulletin board, it is very clear that this bulletin board was not a matter of indoctrination to any point of view. This was an act of civility. This was an act of compassion, basic human decency, inclusivity for all the students in the Goffstown system. And for whoever was responsible for that, I commend you, and I appreciate so much the efforts that this board and so many of our faculty and so many do to make it such a warm, inclusive, and loving environment. And yes, it was an act of love. It was an act of love for fellow human beings. But we continue to hear the indoctrination. I haven't heard the word grooming yet tonight, that's typically also used. And I would just like to state that from my point of view, indoctrination is occurring when others are trying to exclude individuals from the conversation. It's an indoctrination to only perceive and raise children in this conservative, narrow viewpoint. That's fine, that's what they want. But there's no right to force that upon everybody else, to force that upon the entire community. It just isn't right. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, any exclusion of other individuals is just simply an act of hate. Any censorship is an act of hate. Any bookmanning and the rest of it is just simply an act of hate. And I would hope that this community reacts negatively to that, that we stay on the course of decency, civility, compassion, and love. And I hope that bulletin board comes back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jan Link. That's the last one.
I'm the last one? Really? Can I speak from here?
No, they can't hear you. They can't hear you on TV.
Can they see me?
Yes. Hi, welcome.
...board members, students, teachers, parents, and concerned citizens of Goffstown. Thank you for having this meeting. My name is Jan Link. I live at 53 Ashlar Drive. I'm a graduate class of 1966. We're the first class to graduate from this building in Goffstown. I'm here simply to say that I am, as a gray-haired person, I am very proud that this community has come out to speak their mind, particularly about the concept of inclusion. And I'm here to advocate for the board and the educators to create a policy, K-12, that is inclusive and that can work in Goffstown. We have no business excluding anyone from any conversation. And I want it noted for the record that Governor Chris Sununu recently signed a proclamation declaring September Welcoming Schools Month. And I'm quoting from the proclamation. "Schools must cultivate and commit to an inclusive culture of belonging to ensure that all students feel safe and welcome and can learn and thrive." And Sean Locke, who is the Assistant Attorney General, I'm gonna, I want this noted in the record also. This is not, he's referring to Governor Sununu's proclamation. "This is not about so-called woke politics," says Sean Locke as an Assistant Attorney General. "This is about having a good and safe place where all students can go to school and be accepted." And the adults in this room and the students in this room, I really am so proud of you for speaking up. It is not easy to address a room full of people, but to advocate for yourself, particularly for inclusion, is something Goffstown simply has to do. I am a veteran educator, and I volunteer here tonight to be on a committee to move forward with an inclusive K-12 policy.
Ma'am, it's been three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is that all the names? Okay, so we got through all of the public comment. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I am closing public comment. You are welcome to stay. We do need to start our board meeting. If you choose to leave, do so quickly and quietly out the door. Yeah, hold on, we take, and the board members are gonna take a five-minute break?
So we're gonna retest?
Yeah, we're gonna-
Re-sess?
Yes, please give Mrs. Moore any of your notes. Thank you. All right, again, if anybody watching on TV, a phone was left in the bathroom. You can come back and get it tonight, or we'll put it in the lost and found in the high school office. So here it is. All right, moving on with our meeting. We need to approve August 28 school board meeting minutes. Does everybody have a chance to look at it? Anybody see anything?
Motion approved as presented.
Thank you, Jared. Do I have a second by Ellen? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstaining, we're unanimous.
I abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand up. One abstention. All right, A and F committees, Dan.
Good evening. What we have before us, the first item is our manifest, so I'd like to make a motion. We approve the manifest in the amount of $2,352,005.14.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Caroline. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, if I can find what I did with the detail. It's on the backside.
Oh.
So we have payroll, payroll taxes, $1.7 million, always the majority. We are very labor-intensive. That's what we do as a school of teaching. We have three sped: North Star Education, Hillcrest Education, and New Boston Physical Therapy, $31,200, $14,500, and $5,000. General expenses, we have several. SAU 19, we paid them $201,600. I am rounding. So if it's difficult, then I will do it to the penny, but I think rounding is okay. The normal stuff, we have Gov Connection, IT equipment, electricity, fire alarm stuff, copier service. We did have a rooftop AC unit blowout at Mountain View. That was replaced at $22,400. Arbiter pay, if you remember, is just the bank account we use to pay the sports officials. That's $20,000. Northeast flooring, we did some floor stuff, $19,944. Uncle Barry's Carpentry paid them for some more donated funds, $17,500 on the press box. We cleared out some trees in the lower fields at MVMS, around $15,600 to Mario Pelletier Tree. Sendgauge Learning Curriculum Consumables, we paid $11,000 for propane. Plodzik and Sanderson, our auditors, $97.50. Some books, Infobase. Infobase happens to be some software. We're going to talk about a transfer, a little bit about some other online software stuff. Northeast Door, Maple Ave, $6,600. And Glen Lake School Repairs to RPF and Sun Mechanical for $5,600. Couple of food services. We talked about a dishwasher a couple of weeks ago, $23,217 at Maple Ave. And Performance Food Service for the normal food and commodities, $12,360.
Does anybody have any questions for Dan? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstaining, we're unanimous.
We have been talking about a MOU with the YMCA. You all had a copy from a previous meeting, or if you had it today. We are ready to go forward with this and have it retroactive to September 1st. You guys remember what this is all about?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, Scott's not here to talk in detail, so I'm...
Can you say in general, so the public hears this?
Yeah, it's in the previous meeting as well, the two previous meetings we did. It basically provides services. The Y uses our buildings. We use the Y. So it's pretty much like a quid pro quo kind of thing. It's for five years. It starts September 1st, 2023. This MOU goes to June 30th, 2028. You know, the legal stuff, insurance, indemnification, provided services, what the Y is going to do is pool time, gymnastic time. They also up to five, youth or teen free YMCA memberships, homeless or disadvantaged students. Mountain View Middle School Flex Program, Life Skills Program, transportation between the Y and all schools provided by the school district, unless the YMCA transportation is available. The lifeguard training program. What the Goffstown School District will do is allow the YMCA to use the high school rear parking lot during the summer when we don't have school for their buses. Occasional use of the Goffstown High School or Mountain View Middle School gym. They will also have before and after-school programming. We will provide space at Maple Ave and Bartlett to accommodate children and for the before and after. And the Y will abide by the following for the before and after-school program, and it lists a whole bunch of things.
I move to direct the administration to sign the proposed five-year memorandum of understanding between the Allard Center YMCA and the Goffstown School District with an effective date of September 1st, 2023.
Sir, Caroline, thank you, Ellen. Ellen, second. Any further discussion or questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
If you want to pull out your DOE 25, that's our annual report to the Department of Education. The Associated MS-25 is the financial report that balances the same information for the DOE 25, but the MS-25 goes to the Department of Revenue for tax rate setting. So if you look at your form, the one that looks like this, the DOE 25, it's got the blue, and we go to page one. The two important things, without trying to get into the detail of all the numbers that we know about and do... Yes.
I'm right here. That was from last meeting, when Scott had given the DOE and the MS-25.
Yes.
Had given it off to the board.
They don't have it tonight? Then don't turn to it. I'll read it for you. On page one, there's two numbers that we talk about that we have all agreed. When the ballot for the Capital Reserve Fund for $250,000 was approved, that number shows for that. And the $1.1 million for the reserve money that we approved two weeks ago is sitting there. The rest is just numbers. But the important thing is, what you may or may not have, is an email from our auditor, Plodzik and Sanderson. And normally what happens is, as you know, we send this information over to them. They take a peek and they give recommended changes. If you have it, there were no recommended changes. Our accounting team, business office, got everything exactly the way the accountants would have approved it. So kudos to them for that work. Again, we had a very clean audit, and now we have a very clean DOE 25 and MS-25. And if this passes and is approved, there are four packets that will be handed around that we each need to sign.
Would you read a motion?
Yes, we do need a motion.
Yes, we do.
To accept the DOE 25 and the MS-25 and to believe, we have a recommended motion by Scott.
I'm not finding it. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dan, to the best of your ability, if we look at the email on bullet two, there's a number there. Is that the amount of taxes that are going back to offset?
Yes. Well, I should do that for the people. There's an unassigned fund balance for tax reduction of $2,606,354.75. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Which, by the way, is about $606,000 greater than what we had expected and had talked about when we requested the budget on the last ballot, or the one that affects this.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Jared. All right, so I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the business administrator to process accounts payable and payroll out of sequence checks.
Oops.
That's not the one.
No, no.
No, that's not the one, but...
That's not the one.
No, I don't think it's written down.
If we don't have one, I'll just come up with one.
Go ahead, Dan, or Shane.
No, Dan can do it. Or whatever, if you want.
Okay, I would, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the signing of the DOE 25 and the MS-25 as presented, and to have the administration submit this to the requisite authorities.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Ellen, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you, Dan.
Now, go!
Now we go to the checks.
All right. I got this one, guys. I move to authorize the business administrator to process accounts payable and payroll out of sequence checks for the fiscal year 2023-2024 school year. These types of payments will be included in the subsequent school board manifest, which is subject to review.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion by Shane. I have a second by Ellen. Any further discussion?
Well, if I can explain this, this is the thing that we do usually once a year. What happens is, and one just happened right before this particular manifest got added to the manifest, someone had a reimbursement of over, around $2,000. And rather than have to wait to get the whole thing, they got reimbursed. It'll be included on our next, it wasn't included on the manifest. It's going to be cut with the same checks, but they can get paid now instead of having to wait the two weeks.
Right, thank you, Dan. So I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, so the last, yep, go ahead.
No, you can. We have a draft A and F schedule. Basically, the A and F schedule pretty much mirrors the Goffstown School Board schedule, and the times vacillate depending on how much Scott has. So Heather, Caroline, and Dan, and Jared in reserve usually get here before every school board meeting, a little earlier. And we go through all of the things that Scott is going to present at the full board and kind of hash it out there and make recommendations to process at the full board. And we did it tonight, and we'll probably do it at every meeting scheduled as we go forward.
Perfect. Thank you, Dan. All right, is there anything else for A and F?
I don't have anything.
The budget transfers?
Yes. No, we didn't actually, we actually didn't approve this schedule.
We didn't talk about it?
Yeah. Should we have? Would you like us to? Okay, I guess we'll take it up at the next meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Cludier, I believe there's also a budget transfer that needs to be processed.
Is that in this, or?
Yes, I can do it.
You want to do it now?
Okay, we just need to make sure we don't...
Yeah, we don't miss it.
So there was, this is about the IT...
Yeah, we have...
...they condensed from MVMS and Goffstown High School into one.
Well, actually, it's still two. What happens is, we buy online electronic information from a couple of different sources. And what was happening is, the Goffstown High School would pay for their license, and then Mountain View would pay for their license. Mr. Borget got together and said, gee whiz, what happens if we just got one license? How much money can I save? And he saved a few thousand dollars. And so what happens is, in order to do that, we, the budget really goes half for Mountain View and half for Goffstown High School. In order for that to work, we need to move $10,000 from the high school budget to the Mountain View Middle School budget. And that's what this particular transfer is requesting. Did you want to read that one, Caroline?
Yeah, so I move to approve the budget transfer listed at GBT-102 as presented in the amount of $10,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
By Dan, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
And you have this?
Yep, I have it.
So that can be signed?
Yep, because if that's signed, it's all signed mine. All right, so we're set with A and F, right, Dan?
I don't know. Are we all set?
I think we are. It was a lot tonight.
I think you got it all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Budget Committee report, Jared.
Yay, and I just lost my calendar, so bear with me.
It's okay.
Perfect timing. There we go. So a lot of activity will be going on with the Budget Committee. Things that are pertinent to us is tomorrow, we will be having facility tours at our elementary school. We'll be starting at Bartlett at 6:00, and then we'll be moving to Maple at 7:00. So we're going to be touring those two schools, hopefully talking about some things in the operational budget, maybe some deltas that have occurred or that we hope to occur for next year, as well as any capital improvement items that we're looking to really get approval from, from our legislative body. So we'll be doing that at those two schools. There is also a Budget Committee the following Tuesday, and this will be for tours at Glen Lake, starting at 6:00, and then moving to Mountain View. And with Mountain View, hopefully, we will be able to see that gorgeous bus turnaround that we have in the back. And the flow of traffic, that is now awesome, going in and out of MVMS, but maybe not on the road itself when we get back to the back road. Anyhow, wanted to let everybody know about that. If you do want to attend, please let the Chair and Denise know so that if we do have a quorum, we have to post it accordingly. But I'm really looking forward to these and sharing all of those things with the Budget Committee so that we can have a very robust discussion and hopefully have a great conversation about those budgets as well.
Right, go ahead, Reta.
Yeah, at our last meeting, Brian and Suzanne Pishka shared a lot about Maple Ave Elementary, and I'm just wondering if that will, is Suzanne going to be there, or is any of that information going to be presented?
I'm not sure who's scheduled to be.
Both principals, I don't want to use first names, I'm sorry, both principals said that they were prepared to present for tomorrow. On a note, because it does due to budget, I think that we've talked about what are we going to look at for next year? Those are conversations we probably need to start having sooner rather than later. Because I would rather have a plan that we can put as part of the budget that could be voted on so that we get support for what our quote-unquote "plan" or "operation plan" is for next year. My opinion, but we'll, I know the Chair will bring it up as we continue forward.
Great, thank you, Jared. Go ahead, Reta.
And just to follow up, I just think if there's an, sometimes when we talk and present, it's one thing, but when you're in the physical environment, to be able to feel it, you know, if some of those pain points can be brought up in a positive way.
Absolutely. I think the past couple of years, I think we've had very great turnout from our Budget Committee. Majority of the members are always showing up, they're asking great questions, sometimes I think a little bit beyond the scope of what they do, but they're engaged, and that's the important thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Is there anything else?
I think we're good to go for Budget Committee.
All right, perfect. Oh, sorry, Ellen. Yeah, go ahead.
Jared, can I assume that you'll be at both those?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. Okay, next, CIP. Ellen, is there any more to report on CIP?
Well, just repeat what I said last time.
Oh, sorry, is anyone going to show up? Sorry, Ellen, is anyone going to show up tomorrow night to let Denise know so we can do a public notice?
So we need?
I got it, don't worry about it.
All right. Thanks, Jared. All right, Denise, you're good. All right, Ellen, I'm sorry, go ahead, CIP.
I'll just repeat what I said at our last meeting. CIP is presenting to our planning board this week, I think it's Thursday at 7:00 at Town Hall, and I'll be speaking to the school district's piece of the proposal. So I don't foresee any issues coming up, so.
So then you'll need to report back at the next meeting as well.
As to how it went.
Okay, perfect, thank you, Ellen. All right, Goffstown Planning Board, Jared.
Yeah, so Planning Board hasn't happened yet, and I'd like to thank the group for saying that you're going to present on your behalf. I don't have a prepared statement yet, but again, I will send that as a memo to Superintendent and Denise to share with everybody else. I'm glad to see that there were some Planning Board members here during public comments, so again, getting some kind of cross committees going, I think, is great, but I'm ready to represent our opinion on that project.
Great, thank you, Jared. All right, P&amp;C.
Yes, P&amp;C will be meeting again, not until November, November 6. And I just wanted to remind folks of all of the New Hampshire School Board Association webinars, that we're able to attend those for free, so upcoming ones that might be of interest. On the 15th of this month, we've got a legislative recap, and then on the 19th, the topic is the school board policies in response to the recent legislation. Also, there was recently one on adequacy funding that's already passed. They also have recordings, so if you ever miss any of those, I just sign up and they send you the link, but we're able to watch the recordings as well.
Thank you, Reta. All right, Policy Review, we have our first meeting next Monday, the 18th, at 5:30 at the SAU. C&amp;E, Jenny.
C&amp;E has its first meeting next Monday as well, at 7:00 PM at the SAU.
Great, thank you. All right, Superintendent, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ellen.
Just a quick question, Heather.
Yeah.
In response to everything we heard, will your, you're the chairman of policy, right?
I am.
Be looking into seeing how our policies stand up to the.
Yeah, we got to see what's on the agenda and stuff.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead, Brian, Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So just, I wanted to thank our three board members that were able to attend. We had a dedication this past Friday for the new theater and the new turf field. Mr. Gross and Mr. Hofft organized a great ribbon cutting. The weather didn't quite work out for us for the game on Friday night, but it was a really well-done event. It was very nice, and I really appreciate people who were able to be here. We mentioned the bus turnaround at Mountain View. Thus far, the bus turnaround has been favorable, a good thing. We're keeping the buses away from mixing with the car traffic, which is what we were trying to do, so for that, we feel it is safer and is working well. We are working on the final pieces of the budget, so the board can expect to see the budget very soon. Some of the things that were mentioned are already included in the budget, so some of the needs at Maple Ave are included in the budget. And I also wanted the board to know that we have been working on, Mrs. Kohler will continue to work with Mrs. McCann and the team here at the high school, but we have been working on a proposal that would be part of the budget that will focus on one-to-one devices for the high school, so more to come on that. Last week was very humid, it was an unpleasant week. There were a number of schools that canceled, some did early release. We didn't do any of those things, and I appreciate the staff that did a really great job managing a really hot, uncomfortable week. And we had a great opening. So, so far, everything has gone really well, and we will continue to keep moving forward. So we had a good first week, and we're looking forward to keep that momentum going. So that's all I have tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Go ahead, Jenny.
Brian, could I just ask you to make a comment on the procedure for parents' complaints? Like, don't we usually have a protocol that if you have a concern, that usually you either go to the teacher first, then the principal, then the superintendent, and then to the school board? If you have.
All of those things, yes.
Would you just speak to that a little bit, please?
Anyone who has an issue, we typically want them to start with that level. So if there's an issue with a coach or a teacher, that we would ask parents to speak with that particular individual. If they are not satisfied, they have not found the relief that they are seeking, they would then go to administration. If people are dissatisfied with a principal's response, they would typically come to me. So that would be the typical chain of command.
Okay, and that would be for anything?
That would be for anything.
In the school instead of? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Jenny. Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, I know that our last meeting, there were several people that mentioned that they were asking for FOIA requests, they're asking for documentation. Have we been able to circle the, or not circle the, I'm sorry, be able to circle back with them to say that we are working on it, or that we've at least communicated that we've received their request and we are processing them accordingly?
So every right-to-know request that I've received has been responded to.
Were they all right-to-know requests or FOIA requests that were sent to, or there are other items as well?
I'm not following you. So all the, so there is no FOIA, it's right-to-know, so it's all under 91A, so the right-to-know requests that I have gotten, I have responded to. There are a couple that I'm still compiling information for people, but all have received responses.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Anyone else? Go ahead, Ellen.
Did you, Brian, receive a concern or complaint from a parent last week or at our last meeting in writing? We passed it around, but I don't know if it got to you, and was that responded to?
So I don't know specifically what you're talking about, Ellen. There was information that was shared by an individual actually sitting here this evening that I asked, that when we went to collect the information at the end of the evening, I did not have the document. So I don't know what happened to her document. I intended to share that with the board. I actually spoke to that individual earlier this evening and asked for that information again. So the papers that were left on that table at the last meeting were pictures of the bulletin board, and we did not have another document that was in that pile. So I apologize to that individual. I don't have a copy of what she gave.
I didn't see it either.
So welcome to send it to me again, and I'm happy to distribute it to the board.
All right, so we're moving on to old business, everybody's good? All right, so last time, we talked about the budget preparation schedules. Everybody good that we're going to be meeting quite a bit through October? Yeah, go ahead, Ellen.
This might be not what you're talking about, but we got a calendar?
That's for all of our school board meetings, and we talk about our budget stuff.
Okay.
All our meetings in October.
There's nothing in here for October.
That's A&amp;F, you don't have that copy.
That's A&amp;F.
It was from last time.
Yeah, we don't have.
Okay, I didn't see it last time. Okay, thank you.
So is everybody good with that?
It is what it is.
Yep, we start, and the member, the start times are 6:00, not 7:00.
Is it? I'm sorry, because I don't have the calendar.
I left it at home.
The first October meetings when they're presenting the overviews, or just the budget reviews, they're starting at 6:00?
The first two are, with the Budget Committee, I think is going to be here, I haven't talked to Scott, to present.
At 6:00?
At 6:00. Is that correct, that we have those meetings starting at 6:00?
The 1st one in October is 6:00.
It's 6:00.
The 2nd is 4, Joe.
So don't show up at 7:00.
I mean, you can, but.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. All right, so moving on, we have policies to move tonight. We've already done first reads, second reads, so there's four of them. And one, the EBBB accident reports, there were a couple of changes, which is on your sheet in red. So I'll entertain motions, if everybody's good with the red for EBBB.
Move to approve policy EBBB as presented.
Thank you, Nicole. Do I have a second? By Reta, do I have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. The next one is EFE, vending machines.
Move to go.
Thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second?
Second.
By, I heard Nicole first, sorry, Jenny. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. The next one is EB, or EHBEH-B-R, data records, retention, and destruction.
I'll make a motion to approve policy EHBR and regulation EHBR as presented.
Thank you, Shane, and I have a second by Ellen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. And the last one is JJ, co-curricular and extracurricular programs.
I'll make a motion to approve policy JJ as presented.
Thank you, Shane. Do I have a second? By Reta, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
And Heather, I know we went through them real quick.
Yes.
But for the public who might be watching tonight, this is actually the third meeting that we've gone through these.
Right, to talk about these, yes, absolutely. Thank you, Dan. All right, new business, tentative date for October SAU board meeting, October 12, 2023 at 6:00.
At the SAU?
At the SAU. So let Mrs. Moran or myself know if that date does not work. So it's the SAU board meeting on October 12 at 6:00 PM.
That's like a Tuesday, right?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay, all right. Oh, Jenny, you have a question, Jenny? Or is your hand?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. My hand's just.
That's fine. All right, so the next on the agenda is public emails. Brian?
So this was a request to have a conversation about public emails and emails that are sent to a quorum of the school board. I don't know to what extent the board wants to discuss this at this point, but if a document is received by a quorum of the school board, that is a document that becomes considered a public document, and that would be a document that someone could request under a right-to-know, people would have the ability to see that. I don't know to what extent there's further discussion about this.
And just because I've dealt in the last 29 years with this, with the state, any single document that would be sent to a, one school board member is a public document, unless it is under one of the exceptions in RSA 91A, and there are a few of them. Security is one of them. Another one would be communication with the attorneys, that's another one. But most everything that we deal with, we can't do anything, we, as a public body, cannot do anything in private unless it falls under one of the exceptions in 91A. It's, it's just not, it's just not allowed. It's transparency.
Thank you, Dan. Ellen, did you have your hand up?
I think what Brian was saying has been our practice for a long time, so to my knowledge, I don't think I've received anything of an email. I just deleted it, not knowing what it was, but.
You, yep, you've received quite a few emails in these last couple of weeks.
Okay, so did they go out to everybody so that everybody's name gets top? Okay.
RSAU 19 email address.
Yeah, that automatically goes to my personal, and I haven't seen it. That's okay.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that while it may be legal to share documents like that, that what happened to Lily this week really was just not very ethical in my perspective, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Nicole. Jared?
Mr. Chair, you had mentioned to all of us as part of the outstanding communications we're getting from the public, that the procedure would be, we don't actually respond to those emails. Do we have a policy of that? Because I know that you said it was a procedure or a process that we've used.
There is a policy that says the Chair and Vice Chair would do the responding.
But maybe if you just continue to, or reiterate that today, to say, if you didn't hear back from us, you might have said it during the individuals, I don't know, I wasn't part of that.
Yep.
But, you know, I know that people are passionate, like, why are people reaching back out to me? I reached out to the board. If you wrote back to everybody?
I tried to write back to everybody. I spent many hours trying to. I may have missed a few, but I did try.
No, that's fine. I just, because if we, you didn't hit reply all, I think you just replied back to them.
No, I don't hit reply all, I just hit reply to this individual.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
I think that's good to clarify, because I get a lot of the same questions, why am I not hearing back from all these people that I copied? So I think it's good for the public to understand that that's the policy.
Yep. Anyone else? Go ahead, Caroline. Go ahead, Caroline.
So I will say, you know, piggyback off of what Nicole said, that while it may not be illegal what anybody did, I think that there are processes to follow for individuals to obtain the information from us that they have a right to. As adults, we have to hold ourselves to a high standard. We have to be role models. We have to be role models to kids. We are on a school board, so it's all about kids. So as adults, we have to do that. As board members, we have to hold ourselves to a higher standard and, you know, make sure that we are making good decisions and right decisions and following, you know, processes and procedures the way that they should be, that everybody should be allowed to follow or have to follow.
Thank you, Caroline. Go ahead, Ginny.
I would also like to add, for anybody that doesn't know, the reason that we have a person here, a student here for school board meetings, is they are elected by students in the school. And we have them here because when, on some of our discussions, it's really important to have a student's purview on something. And it's helpful in our discussion to say, hey, Lily, what is, you know, what's the consensus in school? And in this situation, what works best? Or, you know, in the hallway, what works best on? And so sometimes it's really helpful to have a student's perspective on things. And we find it very valuable to have a student here. And I think the students really feel that it's important that they have a say in what's going on in the school, at the school board. You know, they have a, a place at the table where Lily can, if something comes up in the school, that she can mention it here to us. It's kind of like an open, open thing. So we, we value having a student representative. So it's, it's not just that we have a kid here, but it's a valuable representative that we have here, both to the school board and to the student population.
Right, thank you, Ginny. Jared, did I see your hand up?
I'll make a comment, because I find it interesting that we always try to promote transparency, and I don't think we should have to go through a legal process to get information that belongs to the public. We've talked about efficacy, we've talked about legality, and those are not the same things. I know that we might not all agree on it, but I, I find it difficult that we are trying to not be transparent, and we're going to tell people to go through a legal process to get information. And it, oh, by the way, it's gonna take 14 to 15 days to get it. I respectfully disagree with some of my colleagues on that. I'm not saying what was said or what was done is right or wrong. I just think that we always should be promoting transparency above everything, with the exception of safety for our students. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Jared. Go ahead, Lil.
Hi. I would like to thank Nicole, and Caroline, and Ginny. It has been a very, very, very rough week, especially starting school. And I don't mean to get emotional, but I do take my job very seriously. And I have a very honest question, because I'm not perfect and I'm still learning. When a right-to, when a right-to-know comes through, do, does that include full email address as well?
You mean someone's actual email address?
Yeah, or is it like blacked out and they can just see what the person wrote?
So that's an interesting question. When someone sends an email to the board, the board is receiving that, that includes their email address. I would say that that is part of what's being submitted to them.
Okay.
I would probably, so if someone asked for a copy of an email address, that would probably be a question. A question, a question for me.
It's not my phone. It's --
For legal.
I'm looking for it, Heather.
They probably are.
Whether someone would get someone else's email address is probably a question I would need to ask our attorney.
Okay. Would you mind doing that for me? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lil. Go ahead, Shane.
Thank you. I appreciate this conversation. What I will say is I would urge all board members to use their best judgment when sharing information, particularly when it involves a student's information or many students' information, especially when that information may be used in an attacking manner. So I would just urge us all to use your best judgment regardless of legality, ethics, et cetera. Do what you think is right, and hopefully you'll land in the right place.
Thank you, Shane. Go ahead, Rhonda.
I'd just like to follow up on a couple of points. In one, I'm thinking about it, you know, the, the right-to-know and sharing all of the emails. We get so many emails, and I really think it doesn't serve anybody's interest to start making this public, because then it's just gonna turn into social media-type reactions. And I, I, I just can't think that that, any good is going to come of that, of anybody's email that they send to us. If somebody wants to fill out a right-to-know, we're not trying to hide it, but I think for the respect of the whole board, that we don't want to get distracted with all, you know, all of these email communications. I do, I will share that I felt very uncomfortable that, that Lily's email was shared. And, and I know that this is not against the law, but I think this is a student that is learning, and it is public, and it is tough to sit in front of the public, for all of us, and to be acting in a very respectful way. And I'm hoping that you've learned a lot, and this is not the end. The other, the other piece of it, I just want to point out that having a student on, on the board is something that we should all be proud of. I think a lot of school systems are trying to do it and don't always achieve it. And we've had a summit here of the school board reps, so it is something that's valued. I wish we had teacher reps as well.
We have, just so the board remembers, we have three teacher rep positions on this board that are vacant.
Right. So I think those are, having, having the different voices at the table is really important. And I'm really impressed with what the student reps have done over the years, is bringing back to the student council, informing the student council of what's happening here. And I think it's important for us to, you know, think about, we're, we're teaching them as well, what, what the board's about.
Absolutely. Anyone else have anything to say? Okay. All right, so we're gonna move on to school staffing.
So we have notifications of two track changes for your information. Molly Brown going from Bachelor's 30 to Masters, and Jenna Tangway going from Bachelor's 15 to Bachelor's 30. Congratulations to them for your approval. I'll do these one at a time. Point, it doesn't say, Sarah Mullin as a part-time physical education teacher at Bartlett. I believe it's point two. Oh, point one.
One day a week.
Oh, it's point, so it's point two.
Point two.
So that's point two, full-time equivalency. You'll remember Sarah, she was a longtime teacher at Bartlett. We're so pleased to welcome her back.
Absolutely. All right, so I'll need a motion to accept this nomination.
So made.
What was that, Ellen?
Move to accept this nomination.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Second by Ginny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
Next, next nomination is for our administrative assistant supervisor. We're so pleased to welcome Lori Barberow in that role.
Move to approve the nomination of Lori Barberow.
Thank you, Ellen. Do I have a second? By Ginny.
Is this the position that we were all talking about? Now they're, they're gonna probably move to a central location.
Yes, so this, this is the position that we had reconfigured all of our administrative assistants after going through a comprehensive analysis process, and this is, one of the outcomes was to create the supervisor position. That's exactly what this is.
And she is a current employee and being promoted.
She is a current employee, being promoted, and is a wonderful employee and a wonderful human being, and we're so lucky to have her in this role.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
So the next is for a student support services nomination. This is a non-union position for Heather Hunter as a registered behavioral technician.
All right, I'll need a motion.
I'll move approval of Heather Hunter.
Thank you, Ellen. Is there a second? By Ginny. Yes, go ahead, Ellen.
This is technician, not behavior specialist.
Technician.
Technician, okay.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, okay, we're unanimous.
And lastly, we have a rather long list of co-curricular, non-athletics being brought to you, and I'm hoping you don't want me to read this whole list that you all have.
I'll move to approve the list of co-curricular, non-sports nominations.
By Ellen, do I have a second?
Second.
By Caroline. All those in, oh, sorry, go ahead, Jared.
Just, just gonna mention it because of the outstanding individual this person is. I'm seeing Andrew Pischka several times on here.
Yes.
So, with everything that's gone on and that he's done. So just shout out that, seeing him for three, three activities. Am I getting that right?
Yeah, that's what I see him for, is three.
And in fact, you reminded me that I did not share with the board that the board is aware that Mr. Pischka was the New Hampshire nominee of the social studies teacher of the year. He has moved on to the national competition, and I believe is one of, I, I think, six to eight as a finalist.
I think I saw eight.
Maybe it's eight. Mr. Pischka is a remarkable teacher, but one of the things that I would always say about Mr. Pischka is people don't realize how much this guy works, how hard he works. He is probably one of the best planned teachers I've ever seen. So yes, he is a special human being, but he works so hard. And we are so lucky to have him and all the other folks that are on this list. This is an incredible list of teachers who go above and beyond and provide exceptional services to our students.
Just adding that, there's, I'm trying to look at all the different names. Many are familiar, but this, Josh DeRosa's on here five times, five different activities that he participates in with our students.
Mr. DeRosa is a busy man.
Yes. I think that's remarkable, that we have staff that give so much of themselves to our school and to our kids, well beyond the teaching.
Agreed. Well said.
Nicole, did you have your hand up?
I was actually also noticing Mr. DeRosa's on here and had similar sentiments, so thank you very much to everyone that's putting the extra work for our kids.
Absolutely. All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. We've had good discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that is it for that. Other business that may legally come before the meeting. Go ahead, Jared.
I know that you'll say it again, but just all the members of the public that came today, I think that I'd like to send a collective shout-out to say thank you for coming, we are listening to you. I know that, I've said it several times, I wish general public came and gave comment. And just to give some people some, some time, because I was keeping track, of actual speaking time from our public comment was one hour, 29 minutes, and 38 seconds, give or take. So even though it might have been two hours on our calendar, that was them speaking for an hour and a half and us listening to what they were saying. So thank you to everybody that spoke, and Heather, great job again.
Thank you. Thank you, Jared, I appreciate that. Go ahead, Ginny.
Actually, I wish we would get public comment more often, because many times, nobody comes and we talk to ourselves. So it would be nice if, if we had more interaction.
Yeah, everybody did a great job. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Yes, go ahead, Ellen.
I don't know if we have any non-public, but do we need to go into non-public to discuss some of the things we heard this evening?
Like, no, we're not scheduled for non-public tonight.
Well, one of the things I know, I remember hearing was that we have seen a really big issue here at the high school.
Okay.
I think that we should, let's take everything in totality.
Right. But I'm hoping the board is, at some point, whether it's in public or non-public, because of maybe staffing issues or whatever, sensitivity or whatever, that we do, in fact, intend to address the issues that have been raised the last two meetings, ourselves, whether it's through our policy or just as a general discussion. I've been the person sitting out there many years ago. And frequently, I was sat there saying, did anybody hear me? And I appreciate what Jared said at our meeting, oh, thank you for coming in.